Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, April 21st, 2022. Clerk McCallum.
Counselor Kent?
Here.
Counselor Genetino?
Here.
Counselor Cuddy?
Here.
Counselor Castro?
Here.
Mayor Quill?
Here. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Leagues? The Pledge of Leagues.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It remains standing for a moment of silent prayer reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Clerk, public announcements.
Thanks, Mayor. We do have a couple of announcements this evening. The first is that on the screens there for Earth Day, the Auburn Beautification Commission is hosting an Owasco River cleanup. That is this week on Saturday, April 23rd, 2022. From 10:00 AM till noon, volunteers are asked to meet near the Mill Street Dam area to be assigned out for some spring cleaning along the Owasco River area through the downtown area. And we also have an Earth Day resolution or proclamation coming up here in a minute. And then we have next week, Mayor, on Monday night, is the next Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for the City of Auburn. The zoning board will be meeting on the 25th of April at 7:00 PM here in council chambers at Memorial City Hall, 24 South Street. Thanks, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Ceremonial proclamation, Earth Day proclamation, please.
Thanks, Mayor. Proclamation from the Office of Mayor Quill for Earth Day, whereas Earth Day is an important celebration that brings special attention to the environment during the month of April. And whereas the theme for Earth Day 2022 is invest in our planet to preserve and protect our health, our families, and our livelihoods, because a green future is a prosperous future. And whereas while there is still time to solve the climate crisis, time to choose both a prosperous and sustainable future and time to restore nature and build a healthy planet for our children and their children, time is short. And whereas the City of Auburn has long demonstrated and continues to pledge to make measurable positive change towards becoming more sustainable. And whereas the city's sustainability initiatives include geothermal heating and cooling at the following municipal buildings, Memorial City Hall, the police and ambulance headquarters, and the Equal Rights Heritage Center. And whereas the city and New York State have invested in hydroelectric facilities at the Mill Street Dam and the recently completed North Division Street Dam, electric vehicle charging stations, as well as the installation of solar panels upcoming at the city landfill. And whereas in 2018, the city was designated a clean energy community by New York State. And whereas Earth Day is important to the citizens and businesses of Auburn as a means of reinforcing the importance of responsible stewardship of the earth's resources demonstrated by several volunteer citizen initiatives that keep the environment at the forefront of local civic action, including the Auburn Permaculture Park, the Auburn Beautification Commission, the Grow Auburn's Trees Program, the Owasco Lake Watership Management Council, the Owasco Watership Lake Association, the Save Owasco Now! organization, and the public group, Quga Climate Action, just to name a few. And whereas it is important for all citizens to help create a sustainable community through sound environmental practices. And whereas the city wishes to call attention to the importance of protecting the environment and to encourage events and activities to help educate and motivate sustainable practices. Now therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Michael D. Quill and members of city council do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2022 as Earth Day here in the City of Auburn.
With us to receive the proclamation is Mr. Lupien, our city engineer. Billy's been involved in just about everything with geothermal and trees isoflate, so there's very little him or his office to that type. So, Billy?
Thank you.
Along to our public to be heard. This time, is there anyone starting to be heard? Please, either podium, please.
You already know the purpose I was here tonight. I'm Marlene Ryan on Orchard Street. And what else you need to know?
That's it.
Okay.
Please.
I already told most of you why I'm coming, why I came here tonight. But you said something, Chuck said something a minute ago that perked up in my mind as to a problem that I've seen, and I don't know if it's been recognized or addressed. I travel near the new bridge, beautiful job done on Division Street, beautiful. However, there's one little thing. If you're coming from, let's say, the Hollywood Restaurant, St. Francis Church area, and you're going north, or east, I'm sorry, east, the cars coming to your left, or from your left, on Division Street, traveling south, okay, have the right of way, which is fine, but there's a little obstacle there, a piece of beauty that's becoming an obstacle, and that's where the bench is, and it's an obstruction to your view of the cars coming, traveling south, and have the right of way. I don't know that maybe a stop sign is needed there, and I'd like maybe somebody to look into it and see if it should be revisited as to making it a little safer. I've noticed that it can be an accident waiting to happen type thing, so just to bring your attention to it.
Thank you. Mr. Dieter, I could see is making notes, and most of the staff is here, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else starting to be heard? Very well, close the first public to be heard. We'll have a second one near the end of the meeting. Problemed meeting, they are available?
April 7th, yeah.
April 7th of this year. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Kent, second by Counselor Castro. Discussion, corrections? Mr. Clerk, I believe I was gone for the meeting.
No, you were here.
No discussion. Clerk, if you call the role, please.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genetino?
Hi.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Castro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Hi. No others, correct?
No.
Mr. Dieter, city manager's report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. A few updates. The coronavirus state and local recovery funds, applications for small businesses, again, are still available on the City of Auburn webpage, as well as the portal on the CEDA webpage. Eligible expense categories include grants to mitigate financial hardship, rehabilitation of commercial properties or other improvements, business incubators and startup or expansion assistance, and enhanced support for microbusinesses. There's a maximum of $40,000 per applicant available, and applications are due April 30th. As I've mentioned in the past, CEDA is administering this program for the City of Auburn, and if folks have got questions or need assistance navigating the online application process, they can contact Julia at CEDA. Also, there is a frequently asked questions portion for this program on the City of Auburn webpage as well. Currently, the City of Auburn is accepting bids for the following projects. The 2022 Annual Road Program, responses are due back by April 26th. Miscellaneous pipes and material for our water and sewer department, responses due back April 28th. The revolving lone sidewalk program, bids for contractors for that, responses are due back May 9th. And more details on all of those programs and bid opportunities is available on the City of Auburn's webpage under the tab Bids and RFPs. Earlier this week, the city was notified by New York State that we were selected for $9 million in funding through the Water Infrastructure Improvement Act Grant Program, also referred to as WIA. Our wastewater treatment plant biosolids process improvement project was a top awardee with 199 awards distributed or awarded statewide. Our project funding was only topped by 11 other projects. It's by value, I believe this was the fourth largest project of those 199 projects. It's another good example of the work of our city staff and the value of investing in that staff to maximize our competitiveness with various grant programs that ultimately reduce the impact of important projects on city taxpayers. This week, Public Works has been planting new trees to replace many of the ash trees that have been removed over the last year or so. So far this week, 35 have been planted, with the plan being to plant 100 trees in total by the end of next week, and a total of 200 by the end of June. In the fall, there will be an additional planting of approximately 300 trees. Today, you may have noticed, or you may notice over the weekend, our Public Works Department removed some landscaping elements from the west side of Exchange Street Plaza near the Auburn Public Theater to make way for some improvements that are happening there and funded through recent CFA and DRI grant programs. Building renovations were recently approved by the City of Auburn Zoning Board, and some of those plantings, especially lilac bushes, are actually being transplanted into Hoops Park, so they're not just being removed, they're just being transplanted. And lastly, earlier this week, several city staff and I met with representatives from Quga County to discuss allocations of ARPA funds from both entities and some projects of potential mutual benefit. Primarily, the discussion focused on expanding the hours of operation for the crisis intervention team, and I was hoping that we might be able to get some feedback tonight from council related to your thoughts on some elements of that discussion. And Chief Slaton is here with some additional information, if you're open to having a brief discussion here at this point about that program.
Can I ask a quick question related to the grant award for the biosolids project? I didn't hear, was there a dollar amount associated with that?
Nine million dollars.
Nine million dollars, thank you.
So, again, earlier in the week, we've been internally having an ongoing discussion, as you know, council, about expanding the crisis intervention team in an effort to dispatch the appropriate type of qualified resource to mental health issues in the community and relieve the police department of some of those interactions that are better handled by other qualified individuals and free them up, free their time up, in some cases, of lengthy standbys that tend to happen. Currently, the service is provided through Liberty Resources for a limited time, about one-third of the 24-hour period during the daytime, and we've been discussing expanding that program. The county has proposed to us a partnership with them utilizing county resources through their mental health operation with a cost share to get that up and running in the first year. And their intent is to hire two more staff people for their operation to be able to expand that service. That would be a countywide service that would also include service here in the city, and that would be from 9:00 AM till 5:00 PM, which would complement the 5:00 PM to midnight that is currently provided by Liberty Resources. Chief, I don't know if you want to jump in there with any more?
Yeah, thank you, city manager, mayor, council. Just, we've spoke about this before, and it's tough to get a solid number on something because the way we categorize calls, there's seven different categories that could fit into this. We've tried to use circumstances codes to narrow it down the best we can. That's a work in progress. We're going to continue to do that to get you more solid numbers. But, for instance, a check the welfare, check the welfare with medical, mental calls, mental with medical, overdose, suicide person, and suicide attempt calls, all could fit in that realm, or we could use a mental health provider on that scene rather than the police. So, for instance, in 2020, we had 1,514 calls of that nature. In 2021, we had 1,681 calls. And then up to date this year, we are at 474 calls. So I tried to break it down real, earlier today. In 2020, Mobile Crisis responded to 52 calls that we called them in, and that would be from that 5:00 o'clock at night to midnight. 2021 was 66 and 11 so far this year. Going back through the calls to cover the midnight, I went through 2020 and looked at the calls after midnight, and that would be an additional 117 calls that could have been made, the Mobile Crisis, had they been available during these hours. So I can do a better breakdown of that, if you'd like, each individual from, you know, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and as such, just to give you the rough numbers, that's quite a few calls for service that the police go to with something medical. Yes, sir?
Who determines the response of the call? In other words, who's going to be the one that says, "This is over here," and?
So dispatch normally gets the phone call, and they will send it out to the patrol officers. If it's with medical, the dispatch medical, which, to make a point here, when we're dispatched to a call with medical, you've got police, fire, and ambulance services going to those calls. So you've got three services within the city. It's when we get there is when we determine who's needed. So the initial dispatch call and what the caller tells dispatch is how we're sent out. With that being said, our officers have an opportunity through our spillman system to add additional notes. So what we've been doing is, if, say, it's a suicide person or suicide attempt call, they will put an additional note in there, a circumstance code, that says Mobile Crisis was added to this call. I spoke with the city manager earlier to get more solid numbers. In the meantime, we could have the officers put in that Mobile Crisis would have been called to this, we would have utilized a mental health service on this call.
So you're still going to respond?
We would still respond.
But not spend a lot of time there, and it would be ended off to somebody else?
Correct. What happens after that is when Mobile Crisis comes to those calls, once we deem the scene safe and they feel comfortable, they take it from there, our officers are relieved and go on additional calls. What happens now is two officers have to go up to the hospital, and oftentimes, we're there for hours waiting for the patient to be seen. Mobile Crisis, what they do is take that over. And Quga County Mental Health would do that during the daytime hours for us.
Thank you.
Yes.
Counsel Genetino?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Slaton, city manager, thank you for bringing this to us, you know, during the entire police reform process that we went through several months ago, that this was a topic that kept coming up, and really setting our officers and our constituents that need the help up for success. Without these services, we're putting people in, I think, bad situations. Police officers are not trained to deal with this type of call, this type of issue. This expands upon what we're currently doing with Liberty Resources. I guess my questions are more related to what this contract looks like with the county. So we're still going to have Liberty Resources for a period of the day, the county will cover the other part of the day. What's the length of this contract?
So, based on the conversation we had earlier this week, what the county's looking for from us is approximately 50% of the first year startup cost of this program. I had mentioned previous that they were looking to add two positions. One of those positions is a mental health therapist, and the other position is a counselor. For a total first year startup cost of $160,000, of which the county has requested, we share 50% of that cost, $80,000. After that initial startup cost, the county has assured me that they will carry the cost of the program and continue providing the service throughout the county, including the City of Auburn, into the future. It'll become part of their budget after that.
So I have a question?
No, go ahead.
So, Chief, you mentioned hiring two more people to expand the operation. How many are currently employed doing this work? Crisis intervention, so this would be two more people to respond to the crisis? Is there anybody doing it right now during those hours, other than Liberty?
During the daytime hours, we can call the county. A lot of times, they are tied up on other, with other individuals.
So you don't have anybody dedicated?
So right now, we don't. There were a couple instances where we called, and they just didn't have the personnel to do it. That's why it was important that they were going to add people to help us cover these calls.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
So if there's a call in the county, would the city still send people out to county to assist the sheriff? We don't send our officers out unless... No, not the police, I'm talking our in-house. They would be contracted, this is through Quga County Mental Health, so it's the county employees. Right, but we're picking up half of it, correct?
Correct.
So would our half go out of the county?
The county employees that currently provide service throughout the entire county.
So our 50% still would go out into the county?
Potentially, at times, yes.
We utilize, just to give you some figures, we utilize about 70% of Mobile Crisis compared to the county. County uses about 30%. We have a higher volume of calls.
But according to the city manager, we're paying 50% for the first year startup cost. From that point on, in perpetuity, it's going to be paid through the county? Correct. That's what I understand, okay.
Yeah, because I, Counsel Castro, I had the same question. And I personally think this is a very fair deal. I'm fine with us contributing 50% of the startup cost. You know, my position on this all along has been, we as city residents pay county taxes, and this is a function of Quga County Mental Health. I'm happy to hear that we've been able to come to an agreement where, yes, we will help with the seed money to start this up. We believe in the program, we believe in the value of it, but going forward, this will be a county-provided function, that we basically pay county taxes, and this is a service that will be provided through those taxes. So I'm comfortable with this arrangement.
Counselors, anyone else? Chief, I agree with everything that's been said here by the council. I'll be interested in next budget season, how this breaks down, whether, you know, whether city or county, where are the resources being used in the most part? But I certainly don't want you to go back to your office this weekend working anymore, putting information together for the council.
I appreciate that. We can put some layers in there that hopefully will extract that data that we do on our calls for service.
Anyone else?
So, council, if, it seems as though there's generally support for moving ahead with the discussions with the county. I know the chair of the legislature is looking forward to that input so that they can move things ahead, and I believe they are ready to move ahead with this as soon as Tuesday evening at their next meeting. And what we can do between now and then is work on an agreement. This will end up being some sort of an agreement, an MOA or something, between the city and the county, that we would bring back to you for final approval. But if the general consensus is, yes, continue to have this discussion with the county, if we can do that, one of the things that Chief and I had also mentioned was to try to have something in that agreement, for there to be some sort of performance measure or performance criteria. That's difficult to determine what that should reasonably be at this point, but we'll work through that.
Can I ask one additional question? This $80,000, where are we pulling this money from?
So originally, one of the thoughts was that it would come out of, there's like a Health and Human Services aspect of the ARPA funding that was set aside, and we've been kind of waiting on that. Through some more discussion this afternoon with our comptroller and Christina Selvik, that may be problematic to take the funds from there just because of the reporting requirements and things like that, but we could take it out of general fund, essentially that had been some of those ARPA funds that were used to offset some general fund expenditure. So essentially, it would still come from ARPA, it would just run through some different channels, if you will.
Can I ask Chief one additional question? Obviously, the human cost is the biggest concern here, but you mentioned currently, police officers, what, send two police officers to the hospital, and they have to stay there sometimes for hours? Does that often generate overtime?
Yes, and what else it does, it's a big thing, is we have a minimum of five people working. There's two at the hospital, we have three left for the city to patrol the whole city, and oftentimes, we may have a second mental health call that goes at a hospital.
So there's a cost savings and there's a public safety aspect of it, too, of we're putting all five officers back on the road?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well said, council.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. Thank you. You have a direction? If you need, Mr. Dieter?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Reports from members of council, councilors? Counselor Cuddy, please.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Before I move further in the meeting, I just wanted to let the council know if we could pull the TNR presentation tonight. The presenter is unable to be here, and in lieu of that, if we can postpone it till next week, and I will include the presentation to my colleagues and to next week's agenda. I may mention it in my presentation tonight regarding the budget.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselors, I'll bring this up now. A few weeks back, I was contacted by Father Cole Pennick from St. Peter and Paul Church in what we would be prepared to do as a community if we were to get folks from the Ukraine. We decided the best way to go with it, so we contacted Mr. Ruhl from the county administration of the county, Charita Yuga County Legislature. We had a meeting upstairs, and Counselor Cuddy was there, and Counselor Kent, we were both there, and, I believe, but it was, and many, many members of staff, it was a full house, it really was, Mr. Dieter was there. The trouble being, we have not received any word from federal or state government in what to expect, if we're to expect anyone, or what, where we're going. We decided upon, Mr. Gould, myself, co-signed a letter which was sent to the president, our two senators, and Mr. Katko, saying that we're ready, willing, and able. We just need guidelines, tell us what you need, what we have to provide. So this will be an ongoing process. I know everyone's concerned about it, and rightfully so, but we have no directions or no idea if how many, or if at all, any folks will be coming in. So we plan to keep you updated in the future, but as of right now, there's no guidance from the federal government or from the state government, so. Very well. Seeker Resolution, Resolution Number Two of 2022, Determining that Proposed Activities Are Type II Actions for Various Capital Projects. We have a sponsor. Counselor Cuddy, Counselor Genetino?
State Environmental Quality Review Act, Resolution Number Two of 2022. Whereas the city council, the City of Auburn, is the sponsor of unrelated capital improvement activities, including the purchase of machinery, apparatus, vehicles, and/or equipment for various city departments, maintenance, repairs, and improvements to various city streets, roads, and/or sidewalks.
We have a sponsor. Councilor Castro, you have a chance.
State Environmental Quality Review Act Resolution Number Two of 2022. Whereas the city council, the city of Auburn, is the sponsor of unrelated capital improvement activities, including the purchase of machinery, apparatus, vehicles, and/or equipment for various city departments, maintenance, repairs, and improvements to various city streets, roads, and/or sidewalks, as part of our annual road improvement program, and replacement and/or building improvements to the solid waste scale house structure located at 311 North Division Street. Whereas the city desires to comply with the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, as set forth in Article Eight of the New York State Environmental Conservation Law, and the requirements of the implementing regulation set forth at six NYCRR, Part 617, with respect to the project. Whereas pursuant to the regulations, the city has considered the project, in light of the actions included on the Type I list specified in Section 6.17.4 of the regulations, and in light of the actions included on the Type II list specified in 617.5 of the regulations. Now therefore be it resolved that, one, the project constitutes a Type II action, because each activity falls within the ambit of one or more of the following actions included on the Type II list specified in Section 617.5 of the regulations. One, maintenance or repair involving no substantial change in an existing structure or facility. Two, replacement, rehabilitation, or reconstruction of a structure or facility in kind on the same site. Three, repaving of existing highways not involving the addition of new travel lanes. Four, street openings and right-of-way openings for the purpose of repair or maintenance of existing utility facilities. Five, maintenance of existing landscaping and natural growth. And six, purchase or sale of furnishings, equipment, or supplies, including surplus government property, other than the following: land, radioactive material, pesticides, herbicides, and/or other hazardous materials. The project is not subject to further review under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and the resolution will take effect immediately.
Thank you. Mr. Diger, anything, yourself or staff would like to add?
I don't think so. Just supporting the borrowing that will be coming up.
Mr. Garland, is this a majority call, or is this a...
This is a simple majority vote.
Simple majority, right. Thank you. Discussion, councilors? Please call the roll.
Councilor Ken?
Yes.
Councilor Genetino?
Aye.
Councilor Cuddy?
Yes.
Councilor Castro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye. Thank you. Bond ordinance number one of 2022, authorizing issuance of $2,345,000 in serial bonds to finance the cost of various capital projects. We have a sponsor. Councilor Genetino, second my counsel Castro.
Bond ordinance number one of 2022. This was read into the record for the first time last week, and the council will be voting on this tonight. Authorizing the issuance of $2,345,000 in serial bonds to finance the cost of various capital projects, be it ordained by the council of the city of Auburn. That one, the city of Auburn, is hereby authorized to undertake the various capital projects described below, at an aggregate estimated maximum cost of $2,345,000, the estimated maximum cost of each project as follows. A, fleet vehicles for Public Works and Codes Department, the purchase of equipment and vehicles to be used for constructing, reconstructing, repairing, or maintaining city improvements, the cost of which is $30,000 or more, including two 10-wheel dump trucks, three fleet vehicles having a seating capacity of less than 10 persons, and a solid waste refuse packer, at an estimated maximum cost not to exceed $775,000, and to issue the aggregate $775,000 in serial bonds. B, equipment for Municipal Utilities Department, the purchase of equipment for the Water and Sewer Department of the city, the cost of which is $30,000 or more, including one abac hoe and one excavator, at an estimated maximum cost not to exceed $370,000, and to issue the aggregate $370,000 in serial bonds. C, equipment for Fire Department turnout gear, the purchase of equipment to be used for personal protective equipment, the cost of which is $30,000 or more, for the city fire department, at an estimated maximum cost not to exceed $240,000, and to issue the aggregate $240,000 in serial bonds. D, 2022-2023 Road Improvement Program, the reconstruction and resurfacing of various city streets and roads, including sidewalks, curbs, gutters, drainage, landscaping, fencing, grading, or improving the rights of way, with a pavement which will be more durable, construction than pavement of sand and gravel, water-bound mechanism or penetration process with a single-surface treatment, and an estimated maximum cost not to exceed $800,000. E, city buildings and grounds improvements, the renovation or reconstruction of the scale house located at the Auburn landfill, whether or not including grading or improvement of the site, original furnishings, equipment, machinery, or apparatus required for the purposes for which such buildings are to be used, at an estimated maximum cost not to exceed $160,000, and to finance an aggregate $160,000 in serial bonds. It is hereby determined that the maximum estimated cost of the aforementioned specific object or purposes is $2,345,000, and said amount is hereby appropriated thereafter, for the plan for the financing thereof shall consist of the issuance of $2,345,000 in serial bonds. It is hereby determined that the period of probable usefulness of the aforementioned specific objects or purposes to Section 11A of the local finance law are as follows. A, the Department of Public Works dump trucks, 15 years. B, the Department of Public Works refuse packer, 15 years. C, staff vehicles, three years. D, 2022-2023 Road Improvement Program, 15 years. And D, the buildings and grounds improvements, 25 years. The council hereby determines that the provisions of the State Environmental Quality Review Act and the regulations they're under have previously been satisfied with respect to the expenditures authorized by this ordinance, and this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon its adoption. Thanks, Mayor.
Discussion, councilors? Councilor Genetino?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make note that in this 2.345 million, some of it is for water and sewer, some is for solid waste, the rest is general fund borrowing. That portion, the general fund borrowing, is 1.595 million, and I believe it was several years ago under the previous comptroller, Ms. Wills. A cap was installed of $2 million a year in borrowing, and I just want to recognize that we're below that. Trying to be fiscally responsible, and I just want to thank staff for working with us on that. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you. Anyone else? Clerk, if you call the roll.
Councilor Ken?
Yes.
Councilor Genetino?
Aye.
Councilor Cuddy?
Yes.
Councilor Castro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carry.
Thank you. Financial Resolution Number Forty of 2022, authorizing various operating and/or capital budget transfers. We have a sponsor. Councilor Ken, second my counsel Genetino.
Financial Resolution Forty of 2022. Whereas the city of Auburn staff is requesting various operating and non-operating budget transfers for the fiscal year 2021-2022, as outlined in Attachment A, whereas there is no fund balance being requested for the transfers, now therefore be it resolved by the council, that the Auburn City Council does hereby authorize the transfers contained in Attachment A for the 2021-22 fiscal year, and the resolution shall take effect immediately.
Thank you. Discussion, councilors?
Quick question, Mayor.
Please.
There is some transfer of funds for overtime. If we could just get a breakdown of what that's covering?
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. So as Councilor Genetino pointed out, these budget transfers that are before you tonight are all relative to the fire department. Two of them, you will note, are moving money into the fire overtime training budget, for a total of $23,000. So what is driving the need to move these funds within my budget to that account is the department's need to host a firefighter academy, and after that, an EMT class. So when the original budget was presented and approved by council, it was the department's intention to send its recruit firefighters to the state fire academy, as it has done in the past. However, at the end of January, we were advised that we no longer had seats in either the OFPC EMT class or the OFPC fire academy. At that point, I made several attempts to find openings in other fire academies across the state, and there were no openings. At that point, it was decided that our only option was to host our own academy, and the driving force behind that was the SAFER grant. SAFER grant that we were awarded by FEMA is a $1.26 million grant for five firefighters with their benefits and salary paid in full for three years. Now, that start date was February 27th, and it could not be pushed back. I tried. So at this point, that's a letter to our need to host our own academy. I have several state fires instructors on my staff, and they all are on the line. And so in order to conduct this academy and hold this EMT class, I need my instructors to come in on overtime to provide that training. In an effort to offset some of those costs, we have brought in nine additional firefighters, recruits from other departments that found themselves in the same position we did, needing their members trained, so that they could be put online to protect our communities. So that's why I'm asking to transfer the funds from within my budget, no general fund expense, just transfer that money over to my overtime line, so I can continue with my fire academy and my state EMT class.
And if we were to have sent recruits to the academy, there would have been a cost associated with that as well, correct?
There would have been a cost associated with that, however, it would not be to the extent it is now. We've determined roughly, we're going to probably have a cost gap of roughly $20,000.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, councilor?
Will you hold the class again?
Will I hold the class again?
For the next time?
A lot of that depends on numbers. In this situation, we had seven of our own, plus we had the outside departments, so we have 16. That's actually a perfect number. It's going very well. All the firefighters are passing all their exams and all their hands on, so I think we're doing a knockout job, and I'd love to be able to provide that training to our members in the future, and our neighboring communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. No further discussion. Clerk, if you call the roll for Resolution Number Forty-One, please.
Councilor Ken?
Yes.
Councilor Genetino?
Aye.
Councilor Cuddy?
Yes.
Councilor Castro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carry.
I misspoke, it's Resolution Number Forty, not Forty-One. Council Resolution Number Forty-One of 2022, authorizing sale of surplus vehicles and equipment pursuant to the 2022 city of Auburn procurement and surplus policy. Do we have a sponsor? Sir Genetino, second my counsel Castro.
Council Resolution Forty-One of 2022, whereas on January 6, 2022, the council of the city of Auburn passed Council Resolution Four of 2022, which adopted a city of Auburn procurement and surplus policy. Whereas the procurement policy requires that the sale of surplus vehicles and equipment with an estimated value of $1,000 or more be approved by city council, whereas a list of city-owned surplus vehicles, equipment, and other items which have outlived their useful life, or are no longer necessary or useful to the city, are attached here to in Exhibit A, and whereas it is in the best interest of the city to dispose of the equipment and vehicles as set forth in Exhibit A through an auction in order to obtain the best value for them. Now therefore be it resolved, the council of the city of Auburn hereby authorizes the sale of the city-owned vehicles and equipment set forth in Exhibit A and attached here to in accordance with the 2022 city of Auburn procurement policy, and I'll read the list, since it's such a long list. We have one 2013 Ford Taurus that's up for sale.
I don't know what to say after that. Discussion, council, please.
Are there any other city vehicles down at the West Dunn Garage that are up for surplus?
We had, I'm trying to remember how long ago it was, but within the last month or so, we had another list before council took care of almost everything. This kind of, this one particular vehicle fell through the cracks, and that's why we're coming back, just to make sure we're doing everything appropriately. So now we've cleared out most of our surplus.
The only reason I ask, because I drive by there, and it seems like, I don't know whether the employees, but it seems like there's a lot of vehicles still down there that haven't moved.
Yeah, you may recall also that the county motor pool is also co-located at the city DPW garage, so there tends to be a lot of vehicles.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Clerk, if you call the roll.
Councilor Ken?
Yes.
Councilor Genetino?
Aye.
Councilor Cuddy?
Yes.
Councilor Castro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carry.
Next is our Human Rights Commission Annual Update and Report. Former Counselor Jilda Brower. Jilda, welcome back.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Jilda Brower from Grover Street, and I'm a member of the Auburn Human Rights Commission. We have three other commissioners here this evening, BB Gonzalez, Kathy Barnard, who is our treasurer, Joe Leo Grand, and I'm the clerk of the commission as well. And so I wanted to read from the bylaws so that we could reacquaint ourselves with the commission. The purpose of the Auburn Human Rights Commission is to foster mutual respect and understanding among all racial, religious, and nationality groups in the community. To achieve this purpose, we make such studies as in any field of human relationship in the community, as the judgment of the commission will feel important enough, and pursue aid in effectuating its general purpose of the commission, which is to investigate incidents of discrimination. We inquire into incidents of tension and conflict among or between various racial, religious, nationality groups, and take such action as may be designated to alleviate such tensions and conflicts. And then it goes on to say, receive complaints of alleged discrimination because of race, creed, color, and national origin, and seek the active assistance of the State Division of Human Rights in the solution of complaints, and also prepare its own plans, which is the actions of our commission, to reduce and eliminate such alleged discrimination through the process of conference, conciliation, and persuasion. Now this year, the commission had three major events. The first one was implicit bias training. It was held June 21st, 22nd, and 23rd for all department heads and city management personnel, led by our city manager. And it's also interesting to note that our Auburn Police Department led this initiative, started it six years ago, when the entire force was trained by Dr. Brian Marks in Syria... in Syracuse. And then during the pandemic, we shut down. We couldn't get together. But it was Chief Slaton who called and said, "Why don't we do small groups?" And that is what moved us ahead. It was fabulous. Also, the recommendation of Dr. Sim Covington, who is Chief Diversity Officer at Finger Lakes Community College. That recommendation, I believe, came from the sheriff. So the training had 120 people, 40 a day. And Dr. Covington made it very clear that bias is something we all have. And I love in the presence of Counselor LaCastro to point out our bias in favor of the Yankees and that that is great and good. But some bias can be a problem. And that is all we're looking to address, really. There's always been justice and respect in every community. It's only when there have been people that have been victimized by it and unable to access fairness and justice that law is required. And civil rights legislation passed in 1963 postures us to really bring more inclusion and equity to everyone in our community. And so the citizens who were denied participation in economic and educational opportunity and social benefits through injustice and intimidation over decades, and even centuries, actually, need to be shown how to engage. They need to know that it is actually safe to engage because many of these individuals have known intimidation and actual abuse when they have tried to find a home in any kind of, any neighborhood. We've come so far in the last 20 years. It's amazing how much more open we are to housing issues. It was really much more defined 30 years ago, extremely difficult for a minority person to choose to buy a house in one of our higher and better neighborhoods. Now, it's welcoming. It's pretty interesting to see. So we have asked, in this up-and-coming budget request, to be able to continue the trainings. They're always needed. There's constant change. People are hired new, others become ill and retire. The community needs to refresh its understanding of our needs and figure out how to be welcoming. I love the diverse Auburn initiative by the Auburn Public Theater because they offered free tickets and went out into the community and invited people who normally wouldn't have felt that that was part of their world, and it worked. They did a lot of diverse programming, and they brought in people intentionally. That kind of concrete effort is wonderful. It makes a big difference. One of the best things we did this year, but hardly anyone knows it, so I'm going to bring it up now, is the fact of having Isabel Wilkerson speak in a virtual program. It was brought to us by Wells College. Her two books, The Warmth of Other Sons, which really, better than anything, explains what Jim Crow is, which, it's not a person. It's 90 years of indiscriminate, arbitrary, and unjust approach to African-Americans throughout this country, not just in the South by any means. Her other book, The Cast, really equates slavery throughout time. We've always had the concept that it would be nice to own a person and then not have to pay them for their work. And I hate to say it. It's totally tasteless to say that. But on the other hand, it's 4,000 years of documented approach to some of humanity. And so Wilkerson points out that intimidation over decades and generations to impose and enforce a structural, a societal structure that systematically excludes and exploits a segment of the population. And then because decades and centuries of messaging and conditioning is needed, is used to educate and indoctrinate self-concepts of inferiority in some and superiority in others, we need to address change constantly and with determination over a long time without thinking ourselves lacking in progress because this is an ever-changing situation that we will always be addressing. So after civil rights legislation, and I'll try to make this very quick, was passed in 1963. I was in college at that time. Prior to this time, it was legal not to hire blacks. You could hire, you can hang a sign that says, "Blacks need not apply." I've said that before here. I don't need to be so redundant. And after civil rights legislation was passed, we had our first black fireman hired in our city. And also, one of our country clubs had to now admit Catholics. Also, domestic violence was legal, and sexual exploitation was legal. There was no recourse for families and so forth. Until we had that legislation, then over the 50 years, we've tested it, and the Supreme Court has had to judge on it. So that we are moving along. We have had this year 145 complaints and calls about housing issues. We had 300 people, also 302, call for information about where to go, whether they had a case or not, and how they could proceed to explore the situation they're in. And then employment. We've had 75 people. Now, some of these, I must say though, might call one month and then be back another month because things progress slowly. So it wasn't exactly 75 people. But lots of folks need help with training and understanding of work ethic issues and so forth. So anyway, we've had 81 cases this year of discrimination in which people called to consult with us about the position that they were in and whether we would guide them and refer them. So just want to thank you for this opportunity. I want to thank the city manager and Chief Slaton for all of the work that they have done. It really adds up. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Jilda escaped pretty quickly. Any questions from council? Very well. Jilda, you learned. You can get in and get out. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Our next regarding Auburn Community Cats, per Counsel Cuddy, has been pulled to a later date?
Yes, possibly next week.
Very good. Thank you. Other business from the council, and I believe the city manager and staff are looking for any input recommendations from the council in regards to the budget. Counsel Cuddy.
I was hoping to have the presentation precede my request for $5,000 to go towards the spay-neuter release initiative. I know that in the past, in fact, Counsel Brower, at the time, there was a budget line for this initiative back then. And I would like to bring that back primarily because it has been brought to my attention over and over again, especially over the last year. I think that COVID, for some reason, has led to this population increase. And I think we need to bring this back into the, have the city be involved in some way. Now, Ms. Lovell is going to propose ways in which this funding will be, you know, possibly dispersed. But I would prefer that she come and say that. I know that they're in the process of forming a 501(c)(3), but in the meantime, there's other mechanisms by which we can, you know, pay the veterinarians because they're primarily the ones that are going to be performing the procedure. So that's one of the things that I'm going to push for, for the budget.
I guess the fairest way, does council want to take action on that? Or Mr. DeGert, do you want to look at that and come back with a proposal?
Well, I think based on our timeframe, some of these items, if you, if council can, if you're comfortable having the discussion amongst yourselves now and giving us a sense, giving staff a sense of where the entire council is on these things, then we can work through the budget more quickly than going one meeting to the next to the next, if you're comfortable with that.
Is that fair enough, council?
Do you want me to weigh in now?
Please.
Having visited several of these cats last summer, I appreciate the need for this. It really is a need. If you walk the streets of Auburn, you can see what's happening. I wish that we could have seen the presentation because I had some questions. So there is an existing organization in another community that you're sort of using or Claire works with? Is that like?
Yeah, so basically, they.
So there's a model?
There's a model. Actually, there's several organizations like this. What this would focus on, they have done this in other areas. But what this would be in cooperation with targeting areas in Auburn, particularly ones where we've received complaints about specifically. These, they would be, they would go to this area and retrieve cats and then go, and then the procedure would be done, and they would be brought back. So that's where we are when it comes to, you know, this would be totally in Auburn, but it's some of the same people that are doing it on the outskirts and maybe even going in Auburn already. But this, you know, what I think is, because it is a city issue, you know, I think it would benefit if Auburn did have a stake in it. Because it was definitely, as you know, Counsel Kent, it was definitely an issue that was brought to our attention during campaign.
And the other thing that I will mention to her next week is that the Finger Lakes Grants Information Center is a great resource. So if we do this, there are opportunities for grant funding for problems like that in communities. So maybe that she could look into that to bolster this.
Yes, yes.
Definitely.
Hopefully, she'll be here next week.
Yeah.
They are in the process of going through a 501(c)(3), but I wanted to make sure that we're, you know.
In line.
Getting things rolling for that, for that to move forward.
Thank you. I would support it.
Thank you.
Counsel. Counselor Castro.
I agree with Counsel Cuddy, but does the SPCA have any involvement with this at all?
Well, that's, I think, what we'd need to find out, whether or not they are, because they could receive the funds.
Yes.
Right, they're set up. They could receive the funds if that's going to be who performs the service.
And I do believe that there are, there's overlapping, how do I say? They can work in concert with each other. I just know that sometimes the, it depends on who's being the veterinarian. Really, the cost primarily is for the procedure to be done. So that's where we would go. But obviously, where there is issues where animals are in danger, the SPCA is involved. So I know that, you know, when this process was first started, they were definitely in the talks with SPCA. But at some point, it became an issue between the veterinarians that will work with this TNR. So, because they were looking to find veterinarians in a group. So I think things would be more clearer next week. The presentation's going to happen today. But what I am going to provide for council and for the clerk is the presentation as it was going to be given tonight. And hopefully, that will answer some questions. And then she'll be able to be here in person next week to answer questions.
Sounds good. Counsel Cuddy, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
If you're going to have that communication before a presentation, if there's any way they can clarify some things, like if the city were to have some sort of an agreement with a veterinary service, is it specifically for spay-neuter? Or if a cat comes in, right? Cat comes in and it has associated other problems, is this just a general fund that takes care of any animal that's brought to that vet? So just some different things.
Yes.
That may come up and create some confusion. If that could be clarified.
Very true. And I think that there's, yes, that's a very good question. I think that that was a discussion between Ms. Lovell, myself, and the concern of the group. So I do think that the intent is just for spay and neutering, but that can be, that can be asked to herself.
I'm supportive of it, really contingent on what we hear next week.
Yes.
And as long as staff's concerns are adequately addressed. I mean, you take a cat to the vet and $5,000 later, you know, it's, so I want to make sure. That's a good question. That it's, the $5,000 is going to go towards spaying and neutering.
It will, yeah. And that's what was discussed. And that's what was discussed. So, and I think that, yes. I don't think it's going to be a.
We can talk about it next week. Those are my concerns.
Out of my, but yes, it's, there's no, I don't think they want it to become anything more than just the TNR model.
Counselor Genetino. Go ahead.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
The only thing I request is, we just talked about this a few minutes ago, where the county is asking the city to pay their fair share. I would want, if we're going to do something, my opinion is it should be limited to the city limits. If it's outside of the city, they have nothing with our neighbors, but they should be responsible for theirs.
Absolutely. So Mayor, what this does is this targets only cats within the limits of Auburn. I know that they're doing fundraising beyond this, and they've already been in and outside of the city. But like, this money is going to be geared towards specific neighborhoods. And I explicitly asked in the early drafts to, you know, make sure there's targeted places that are recognized and numbers within neighborhoods so that there's, you know, it's specific to say, you know, Delavan Street, Van Patten, like areas that I've had a barber. There's these areas that, when I was going door-to-door, had cat population issues. Case have. There's various, there are areas that definitely have an issue that I could say out now. But yeah, we're not going to be funding anything outside. But yeah, we're not going to be funding anything outside the city limits, for sure.
Thank you. Counselor Cuddy?
I don't want to drag this out, I mean, but a cat problem isn't just in Auburn, New York. What do other communities do? Do they have a program or assistance?
I think that's what this group's going to get at, right? They're familiar with some of these other programs.
Yeah, there's, there's Cat Coalition Essential New York. I mean, I didn't know there was this many cat organizations until, until I went door to door. But, but really, this is, we're kind of doing what other communities are doing. And in the past, we have done something like this, like Counselor Brouwer remembers. So we're just, I guess, kind of like restarting this program. It's nominal, it's not like a, but it, but it's, it's something that needs to happen to kind of curtail an exploding population.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Counselor Brouwer, we came on board together. We were discussing this many, many years ago. And hopefully, this will kind of put an end to it. So it's important, but I want to get something that works for us, so.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have some additional budget input if that's-
Sure, sure. I just want to make sure that everyone's good with this and then we'll move along. So Counselor Genatino?
First of all, I'd like to thank staff for putting together a budget. I know it's an arduous process every year. A tremendous amount of work goes into it. The presentations that we've provided shows that, so I just want to acknowledge them. You know, two years ago, our direction to the manager and staff was to present us with an austerity budget because COVID had come upon us right at the beginning of budget season. And our concern there was, we didn't know what was going to happen financially. And our, our primary concern was making sure that we were able to continue to provide the services to the people of Auburn that they rely on. And to keep all of our employees employed, we were able to do that. I think it can be argued that during COVID and this austerity budget, we actually took on additional responsibilities in the city, and necessarily so. And I think that's what really navigated all of us through, through this pandemic. I feel that the budget that has been presented to us this year is both operationally and fiscally responsible. It allows us to continue to address those day-to-day services that I mentioned while also expanding upon those services and addressing deficiencies within the organization. And I think this is something that we've tried to do over the last several years. I think two examples we can talk about is not having a human resources person, not having a second IT person. Those were deficiencies within this organization and they've been addressed. Some things that were presented to us that I am in favor of, and I just, I just want to touch upon them, that go towards the operational portion that I mentioned. There was a request to add an additional staff member at Auburn Police Department to administer the new body camera program. I feel this is absolutely necessary. It came up repeatedly in our discussions with the community and with the police department and the sheriff's department regarding police reform. We just had a New York State Attorney General's report regarding an officer-involved shooting, where the Attorney General's Office, without a doubt, the Auburn Police Department did everything that they were supposed to do despite a tragic outcome. But the one thing they mentioned was the lack of body worn cameras. So this is necessary, and I support that position 100%. There's two additional staff requests for DPW. I think no matter how long any of us have been on Council, whether it's, you know, as long as the mayor's been or as long as Counselor Kent's been, we all receive calls from constituents about issues within the community, whether it be a park, those things need to be addressed. We have invested significant resources into our parks, but we don't have the staff to adequately maintain them going forward. Mr. Talbot is a miracle worker as far as I'm concerned. With the resources that he has provided, this is an opportunity to continue to invest in this community. So I do support the addition of these positions. The only thing I would ask, and I did ask him during his presentation, is that we have some type of an idea what the plan is to utilize those resources. Again, not to micromanage, just to better understand. It also adds a grant writer position. We know that there is a tremendous amount of money that's going to be coming from the federal and state government in regards to infrastructure funding. City Manager reported tonight that the city of Auburn was awarded a $9 million grant. And that's because our staff did the work. They put, they put the project together. They had the foresight to bring it to us. We had the foresight to pass it. And because of that, we were able to receive a significant portion of funding for that, which will allow us to keep the sewer rate where it is. We were going to be able to do that before. This will allow us to do that while continuing to invest into our sewer infrastructure. This budget also allows us to compete in a very competitive labor market. This is a problem that is nationwide. It is not, something that does not affect the public service sector, it very much does. And this will allow us to address that. It is important that we compensate our employees. It is important that we maintain our workforce. Now, I mentioned a lot there, and the interesting thing is that we're able to do this, all of this, in a fiscally, in my opinion, a fiscally responsible manner. We're able to do this by decreasing the tax rate 14.9% from $12.55 per thousand to $10.68, $10.68 cents per thousand. I know that that is dependent on the final assessment roll, and hopefully we'll have that very soon. As a result of this, the average single-family home in the city of Auburn, which is valued at approximately $120,000, will actually see a tax decrease of $225. I do have a couple, and actually, let me back up. We're able to do this at the same time that we're experiencing double-digit inflation nationwide. And I think it's, without the additional help from the state that we talked about last week. And I just think it's indicative of the good work that the staff has done, being vigilant with our finances. And I'm happy with what's been presented to us. There's a couple other areas that I'd like to address as well, if we can. City Manager brought up the issue of City Hall security. It has become, for the reasons that you've specified, a very serious issue. Because it's been brought up to us, I feel that the, it is on us to address it. And I'm asking that we come up with a figure associated with what needs to be done. And in my opinion, that does, that does include human resources. We need physical people in this building. And I would argue what we've kind of called the City Hall campus, possibly paying attention to the Equal Rights Heritage Center and the parking garage. I would ask that it be included in this budget. Because the reality is, if it's not budgeted for, it doesn't exist. So if we could maybe be presented with a dollar amount, I know that you've been looking into it. Civil Service Commission. Our Civil Service Commission does a tremendous amount of work. We have three commissioners. They are compensated at $3,000 annually. Anybody who knows anything about the civil service system knows that they're, the exams are given on the weekends, so there's Saturday exam dates that are given. Those civil service commissioners have to be there. They have to be there for the agility test. There's a lot of hours that they put in, in the evenings, going over the lists, attending the meetings. As I mentioned, our civil service commissioners are compensated at $3,000 a year. To put things in perspective, the county civil service commissioners are compensated at $10,000 a year. I'm proposing a bump in that compensation. Obviously, it's up for discussion. I'm proposing that we bump that to $5,000 per civil service commissioner. It's, it's been $3,000 as long as I've been on Council. That's six years. I don't think that there's been an increase in, at least a decade. And the other thing I would ask is, and I know anytime we start adding things to the budget, the question is, where does, where does that money come from? I'm not proposing that we cut anything out. What I would propose is, can we look at what the cost of all this is? The cost of what Counselor Cuddy is proposing with the cat program? And perhaps we can look at sales tax? I know that we're proposing, I think, a 6.3% bump into the budget. We know that it's been a little higher than that. And I'd like to know if the Comptroller is comfortable bumping up that number to cover this rather than cutting something else out. And on the topic of the budget, I don't know if anybody else, okay. Why don't you go and then, as requested last week, we put a letter together, and I'd like the Clerk to read that into the record.
So you're done.
Thank you.
So I also had noted the importance of having security in this building. So I agree with you and support that. And I'm not going to read my little blurb about it because it's basically the same thing. I want to just say one thing to Counselor Brouwer, who's still here.
Yes.
Thank you. You can't remind us too often about the importance of not taking what we have for granted. I just want to say that to you because I, you ran away and I couldn't talk to you when you left the podium. But off-topic, I just wanted to make sure, since you're here. Thank you very much again for the presentation. So what I wanted to talk about was, I just wondered if I could ask my fellow councilors and the mayor to support Dr. Effler's request. He was here about a month ago, representing the Wasco Lake Water Shed Management Council. And he presented with his staff. And he has asked for the city to increase the support for the management council by $6,300 in this coming budget. That's about 3% increase over what we provided him last year. And so people here have a longer history with that management council than I do. So I have been attending the meetings and I have talked to Dr. Effler about this specifically, just asked him some questions. And so he's very pleased with the progress that the Council's been making. And I'm not going to repeat everything he told us last month, it was quite a bit. But I just want to make a couple of points. One was that the goal is for all of the villages and towns, there's 12 of them, in the watershed, to make a commitment to the watershed, to the watershed management council and also make a commitment financially. And of the 12, we have nine that have done so. And we have three that actually increased their donation for this coming year. So between that and helping build his capacity to attract more grant funding, I think that this is really a reasonable request. As you know, they just added an additional watershed inspector. Last year, with one inspector, I believe she, she went on 49 sites. And after being at some of those meetings, I can see that they are constantly in contact with the DUC, with the County Department of Health. So that's a, and there's a lot of travel involved. So I would like to respectfully ask that we honor that request for an additional $6,300.
Oh, sorry. Would you like to go, Counselor?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to throw my support behind that 3% increase into the budget.
Thank you.
I support that as well, and I'm assuming that Mr. Jensen's been involved in those meetings, so he fits into his budget?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? I'm agreeing with the three items I have, the security, I've been after that since I first started here at City Health, so I'm totally amped up with it. So service, I, I wish there was a way we could pay all of our boards and commissions. They take a lot of time out of their own lives to do a great service for us. We would be nowhere without any more committees. And the watershed, I have no opposition to that. My recommendation would be to Mr. Diger, if he would work with staff and come up with the proposals, and if we move this over here, what happens over here? You know, every action is an equal reaction. So I would, with Council's permission, I would ask Mr. Diger and staff to try to put some of this together. Maybe when it, next week, if that's what it's proposed for, there may not be something in there that we really feel is worth everything else that was changed for, but I feel that's a Council decision, is accrued, so. Does that sound agreeable, councilors?
Anything else?
I just want to say one thing. Mr. Lupien and I have been around here the longest for budget hearings and budget meetings. And in the old days, Billy, I think you'll bear me out, we'd have another four or five hours, and we'd only be on one department. So I do want to thank yourself and staff for the professionalism in preparing a budget and understanding what all the good parts and bad parts are. It's, it is a balancing act. But if you drive through our community, walk through our community, you can see that it has made a difference in the way our downtown looks, the way our neighborhoods look. Are they perfect yet? No, nothing's ever perfect, but we're getting there. We've made a lot of great strides over the years. So I do want to thank you and staff for preparing this. Anything else, Counselor? Counselor?
If I may, Mayor, last week, there was some discussion regarding the disappointment in this state budget. For the 14th consecutive year, there's been no increase in AIM funding. And the result of that conversation was the agreement of Council for myself and Mr. Mason to work together to craft a letter, send to the Governor's Office. If it's agreeable with everyone, I'd like Mr. Mason to read that letter into the record.
Please do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll read this tonight, and then we'll ask the councilors to sign it tonight. And we'll get it in the, out to the Governor's Office tomorrow. So a letter that will be addressed to Governor Hochul. Dear Governor Hochul, each year municipal governments across New York State wait in anticipation as the state budget process unfolds. And this year was certainly no different. The decisions made in Albany have a direct impact on how municipal governments budget to provide the essential services for our constituents that our constituents rely on. One of the most impactful components of the state budget for the city is aid and incentives to municipalities, also known as AIM funding. In the 2010, 2011 New York State budget, when the state needed to address a projected $7.4 billion budget gap, Auburn's AIM funding was cut and has remained flat ever since. Prior to that year, the state had cut our AIM in the previous three state budgets by $245,708. And when accounting for inflation over time, the financial impact to the city of Auburn totals in the millions of dollars of lost unrestricted state assistance. No executive budget since has proposed any increase in AIM funds despite providing increases to other notable state assistance programs over those years. During this time, along with our advocacy organization, the New York State Council Conference of Mayors, also known as NICOM, we have continuously lobbied the executive and legislative branches to restore AIM funding. These efforts have been consistently ignored in executive budget proposals. The 2022 executive budget once again kept AIM funding flat. However, there was reason to be optimistic when the Senate One House budget proposed a $210 million increase, and the Assembly One House budget proposed a $150 million increase. This optimism was short-lived, however, as the final 2022-23 budget once again contained no increases. This is disappointing, to say the least. It is unconscionable that the 2022-23 executive budget, composed when New York State was dealing with projected budget surplus, that a budget was adopted that increased overall spending by 10% in one year, from $200 billion to $220 billion, yet kept AIM funding flat amid our country experiencing record inflation rates. To put things in perspective, the total AIM allocation for the entire state of New York is 647 million. Even more puzzling is the fact that the budget allocated $600 billion for the construction of a, for the construction of a stadium for a football team owned by two billionaires who reside in Florida, and $20 million for improvements to the already renovated Carrier Dome, despite the fact that Syracuse University sits on a $1.8 billion endowment. With the state's budget now having been adopted, there is no hope for AIM funding increase for another state budget year. We implore you to realize the financial impact this has on our cities, towns, and villages as you travel the state this year and begin to compile your thoughts and ideas for your next executive budget proposal, signed by the mayor and members of council.
I'm fine with the letter. I think it was a great job. I would request that we send a copy along to NICOM, just for their files. If that's agreeable with Council, but maybe it would get a few more cities on the pan, do something, so. Any objections? And myself signing it, Counselor. Sign it.
Yep.
Sign it at the end of the meeting. Anything else from council? Our second public to be heard? Is there anyone desiring to be heard this evening that hasn't already spoken? Very well. Executive session, Mr. Deiger?
Mayor, we have one item made confidential under attorney-client privilege.
Anyone, anything else to that?
I have one as well, for the same reason.
Same reason, very well. Entertained motion for executive session. Counselor Genetino, second by Counselor Cuddy. Please call the rule.
Executive session at 6:32 PM. Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genetino.
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor Castro.
Yes.
Hi. Recess.
Yeah, everyone's got a sign.
Yes. Yeah, I do. No, 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 don't worry. Don't worry.
Pack in, pack out, like a state park, right? It's funny you mention that. I mean, we were.